Hey Brian, I did, I did say.
I don't even need to do that. What happened? All these students here, they're better behaved than the council. We're inundated with students tonight. This is wonderful. So we'll turn this into a civics lesson. We've got questions for you afterwards. You'll need a report to your teachers on what you've learned about this efficient government you're about to see, right? If you all sticked around for the whole time, there's something wrong with you. Cause I wouldn't be here the whole time if I didn't have to be. So, hey, we're thrilled to have, uh, we've got an orchestra and we've got some sports to honor and, uh, we're gonna have a great time. Might get to some legislation, we'll see. We always start out with the pledge of allegiance and an invocation. Is, uh, Dwayne Quezenberry here? Oh, right there. Sorry, Dwayne, didn't see you. He is the pastor at Village Park, uh, Bible Methodist Church here in Westfield. Thanks for being here. So, if you'll rise, we'll do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for the blessings that you give to our city. As this evening, uh, Lord, we are gathered here to transact business, but also to celebrate the blessings that you give to us. And a part of those blessings are the gift of our students. We pray that you will help us to be inspired through their hope and optimism that they bring to us. Bless their talents, I pray. Bless this evening. We thank you, Lord, for, uh, the love that is in our city. And I pray that we will share your love with our fellow citizens, with our neighbors, and so that our city will be a city of peace. Bless our administrative government officials. I pray that you would give them the wisdom that comes from you. We pray this in the name of Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. President A, at your meeting, sir?
Alright, thank you. Welcome, everybody, to this March, uh, second meeting in March, the twenty-sixth. There are no, uh, changes to the agenda, and so we will proceed to follow what is written. First up are the approval of the minutes from our March twelfth quorum. Oh, please call the quorum.
Joe Edwards.
Here.
Bob Orkay.
Here.
Jamaic.
Here.
Cindy Spoljerick.
Here.
Chuck Lehman.
Here.
Here.
Mark Keen.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Alright, there you go. It wasn't on the agenda, so that was a change. Thank you. Alright, now we can conduct some business. Uh, we'll proceed with, uh, the approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve, March twelfth minute.
I have a motion by Cindy Spoljerick and a second by Joe Edwards. Any discussion? Hearing none, I would ask that if you're in favor of approving the minutes as stated, please signify by saying aye.
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 Posed. Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Next item up are the claims. I'd also ask a motion to approve the claims.
Move to approve claims.
I have a motion by Dr. Keen to approve claims as stated. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Joe Edwards seconds the motion to approve claims as stated. All those in favor of approving the claims, approval of the claims, please signify by saying aye.
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 Posed, same sign. Claims stand approved. At this time, I'm honored to have, uh, uh, some representatives from our schools here to celebrate March and music in our schools month. Uh, with the Westfield High School, uh, looks like, uh, String- Strings here with us tonight. So you're in for a real treat. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes. Are we gonna hear a presentation?
Um, I'm Amy Smith and, um, I am a professional band mom. Um, I am my twenty-seventh consecutive trimester of music education in Westfield Schools. Um, I have two kids who I really wanted in the tryout band because of how it's cool and, you know, it's something to do without for us pretty well. Um, they both could become music educators, um, within the next four or six years. So, um, I think we may want to bet. Um, I think the most important thing about music in our schools is, um, to be honest, I never read any of my research. I had fun. Band was fun. It was a great time. We made out with friends and that was my goal. But once I found out how important it was to other aspects of education, I became sort of an advocate for it. Because music empowers cognitive, um, development, empowers learning from the age of two to seventy-two. They're finding it's starting to help with, um, memory loss and do all kinds of things even the elder, um, population. And I'm not here to promote everybody needs to be in music major. That's not it at all. It's about the fact that it, statistics show that those involved in music, especially group music, um, do go on and do much better in foreign colleges and engineering programs and medical programs. And I think the best example we have is University of Pittsburgh. Some of our amazing engineers, musicians, Australians, um, people who go to NASA. And they have one of the largest, strongest music programs in the country and do not offer one credit hour for that involvement. And so I think they understand that these kids who continue to be in group music, um, continue to be very successful in other things they do because it prepares them better wise for perseverance, dedication, working with group, creative thinking, think math, think math, problem solving, responsibility, time management, on and on and on. Um, when you look at what it also does for career readiness, life readiness, um, those kinds of things. So that's why I get really fired up. So if you have to share that information, be aware of anything. Well, Cindy, one day, um, just for kind of fun and in mind when you start group, um, how many of you in the room play an instrument at any time during your high school career or college career? And I knew we had, I knew we had, I was gonna run through that right there. So, um, hopefully, hopefully the idea against just the fact that we'll continue to work in schools and, and councils themselves to try to figure out how to keep chemistry in a band or to stay in an extracurricular streams, um, ensemble or something like that. Cause I know it's hard and I know the pressure's harder and harder and harder. My kids, I think the counselors at Westfield are glad to see us go because we fought all twenty-seven ministers sometimes to just to keep that going. Um, every Friday at school, we're playing Fun Back Friday. So today I'm playing Music Money, Money Mania. And so I've got a couple of prizes. So first one, raise your hand that I can see. And I'll try another time. How many strings do the following instruments have? Violin, viola, cello, and bass? How many strings? Two, four, three, two, two, three, four. How many different string instruments make up a swing orchestra? How many does it take to make an orchestra? Very similar, yes, or? Who said four? Ready? Catch. Three. Okay. And one more. I had it. Oh, how many strings on a standard violin you play? Yes. Missing. Four. There you go. Okay. Let me introduce the invisible strings. This is actually an extracurricular group. Because, everyone who wants to know, Westfield is the only school in Hamilton County that does not offer orchestra. Wow. We need to work on that. We need to improve that. We also do the referendum and some of the things we're doing, that's coming our way. But, but literally, it also takes more people. So we need to stop fighting about how much is the cost to provide a music program and what should we turn on investment instead. That's my proposal. And so Chris Aladet, um, is our illustrious leader, and she will kind of about the invisible strings.
Hi, my name's Chris Aladet and I'm a mom. I don't work in the school system. Um, I'm just a mom who wants to provide a string opportunity for the kids in Westfield and at Westfield High School specifically. So we are an after-school club. We get together every Monday, right after school, and we play for the love of it. And we perform at band concerts and at special opportunities like tonight. Um, so these kids are super, uh, involved and they love music. Some of them started out in band, but they play, um, string instruments all over their lives. Others play string instruments and came from other school districts. So we have Ella, who started out on bass clarinet. She plays the violin. She plays the string bass. Super musical girl. And we have Maria, who is a trumpet player in the middle school band, and she plays the violin for fun. We have Alan, who plays violin for fun and has played for years. We have Alexis, who came to us from Evansville, where they have a school music program for strings, school orchestra program. Um, so she is with us, and she's going off to IU in the fall. Super successful girl. We have Waven, who has played the cello for years, comes from the music family. And we have Katie, who plays trumpet in band, um, plays the cello, plays keyboard at church, and we're just music lovers. So we are so excited to play for you, um, an arrangement of Gustav Holz, The Warrior of Joy, based on Jupiter from the Planets. You will recognize this one. Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much for, for liking, for liking, uh, New York, for doing this. So we want to declare our march, uh, as a hand in hand across the nation, as National Association for Music Education in our schools. Uh, purpose is to raise awareness and support the value of music and education. Uh, music shapes and lets students understand themselves and the role of life in it. It truly is an international language, music and the other arts, enhance the morality and quality of our student environment. So therefore, the city of Westfield proudly supports our main students and teachers and mothers who dedicate their time and talent to music education. So therefore, I can propose, Mayor of the City of Westfield, duty player, march two thousand eighteen as music in our school farm in the city of Westfield. Good job.
Another thing. Jim, come on down.
It's been quite a winter for sports at our middle school in us. All kinds of achievements here, huh? This is incredible. Um, coach come forward. All of you.
You're gonna have to stand up back there. Hey, girls basketball, boys basketball, girls and stand up, swim and stand up.
Wow. So. Alright, let's go through this here. Boys eighth grade basketball won both the conference and the county, uh, and also the theme tournament. Once you got ready to lie rants on hunger, you're gonna do that. First time to win the county since two thousand and five. And only the fourth time in the history of the county coached by Birch Dalton. Wow. Now I knew about this as soon as the game was over because he called me.
Aye, this is for President Jamaic. We have the signed basketball. This is our guard here, Alex Wilton, and this is a flag for you to carry.
Congratulations. Alright, then again. Girls basketball went undefeated, uh, for both their seventh and eighth grade years together as a team, and also won the county issue. Wow.
Undefeated for two years. Pretty good sign. There's a big, you almost have a big feeling from when the boys just came in.
Yep, I got wrestling down there.
Here's wrestling.
Alright. Oh, I got it. Bert, you also will be noted that you guys feel in the basketball area that having a facility to throw park has-
Let me make a comment on this, because this is one rare chances. You know, sometimes in our world, especially when you see Congress, you see a bunch of potty partisan fighting. You know, we can't make a decision as a majority and then everybody stepping lines for it. Somewhere years ago, and it's probably been six or eight, uh, I was alone, negative vote for Grant Park from WY side.
That was last year.
But, uh, Steve Hakey, Mary Cook, uh, Pedro Ford, and, you know, I just voiced my opinion, uh, lost the vote six to one. You know, and after it was done, I believe the majority wins, you fall in line, and you become a good footsledder. So this is a chance for me to say, well, you know, I was wrong and they were right, you know, Grant Park has worked. But if you look at the quality of play, because of the filled house at Grant Park, raise your hands if you guys play basketball at Grant Park, can you? Alright, that's in the off season. So our, our sports, we have, our wave has gotten height. We're a better group of players. And, you know, I've seen it in basketball just the last two years. So, again, good job on Grant.
Apologies.
So wrestling.
Wrestling. This is Mike Steele?
No, I heard that.
Oh, that's on your brand. He's a good man. It says this. Mike Steele's coached you for twenty years.
Over twenty years, yes.
Wow, and you won the county tournament also?
How many times? Our twelfth county. Twelfth county wrestling.
Wow, congratulations.
Alright, come on, come on, sir. It's my sport. Alright, good, good. Alright, good sign.
Just talk.
Thank you.
So how long have you been coaching?
Uh, while I was announced my retirement after twenty months.
Twenty-one. Wow, this, this, this means playing undefeated for the entire season, which therefore, I'm speaking, makes you also the county champion.
Well, since-
You will say that.
We can say that. We can beat Hamilton Heights and they're the only other county school that has a middle school.
Then you are the county champion. Alright, that's good. And if we all play our part right in this county, I wish we were going to be here, we may have a good future for the next few years.
I understand that.
We're working towards that. Well, congratulations to all our teams. Fantastic. Why don't we just adjourn the meeting?
Sounds good.
Yep, I imagine our room's gonna pretty much empty. It's quite a, do we have a trophy case? That was quite good. Alright.
I've heard that.
Because Jared's not gonna work very long.
Mr. A, where are we?
Well, I don't know. That was quite a bit of energy in the room and quite a spectacular performance by both our, uh, string or- orchestra, as I understand the definition of orchestra now, and also our sports teams. What an accomplishment for our middle school. And it's quite an honor to have them and have the facilities that can develop these fine young men and women in our community, so. Alright, I guess we're going to move-
We're on a high note, so I'll make a motion that we adjourn. Go out on top. Always leaving wanting more.
I think we have a little old business and new business to attend to, Bob, but, uh, I don't think you'll get a second. Does Bob have a second? Alright, we'll move on.
I probably have a lot of them, actually.
Thank you. Now moving into some business portion of our meeting and the old business. So we have ordinance seventeen dash forty-one, Spring Mill Station. Uh, amendment, Ms. Howard, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Before you this evening, I have an amendment to the Spring Mill Station southwest corner Planned Unit Development District. The original ordinance was adopted in two thousand fifteen and included twenty acres on the south side of one sixty-first street, just west of Spring Mill Road, where Rainbow Child Care is currently under construction. The amendment also incorporates the additional twenty acres directly east of that site on the corner of one sixty-first and Spring Mill, which is owned the depot PUD, adopted in two thousand sixteen. The amendment ordinance combines the two previous ordinances and includes standards for commercial and multifamily development. The petitioners did meet with the Spring Mill Station Task Group throughout the process, and a letter of support is included as an exhibit on the agenda. This item does come to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission's January second meeting and is ready for your adoption consideration this evening. I do have Birch Dalton here with Ed Rock. He does not plan to make a presentation, but is available for questions, as am I, if you have any of staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our Pam Howard or the petitioner at this time?
I have a question. It was unclear to me with the site, uh, amenities, when exactly those would be installed?
When you talk about what, the commercial site amenities or the apartment amenities?
Well, the apartment amenities, I figured you'd do pretty early in it, but as usual, but the commercial ones?
Well, the main site amenities, as far as the infrastructure with the internal roads and the spine road, we're still working out a detailed development plan, or a development agreement, rather, with the city. But, um, I don't have a laser. Do you have your laser handy? If you look in the upper right corner, that common area, that circle area, you know, that would be, um, brought online at, right at the front end of it. Uh, um, we're actually quoting some canopies and some covered areas right now. Uh, so that, along with the trails, would go in at the front end as we're waiting for the various parcel buyers to build their buildings. You know, if we're on track this year, you'll see the first retail, uh, on the Spring Mill side, the medical on this side, and then the second retail will probably go in nineteen. All the, all those parcels are spoken for by buyers. What other amenities are you concerned about?
Well, primarily, it was that corner.
Okay.
And I know you have a separate agreement, I believe, with the schools on that.
Yes, yeah, um, if you look at the retanage pond, lower right on the Spring Mill side, that's gonna service the commercial side. And so the apartments, we added another retention, more as a cosmetic, but, uh, we're still gonna do the pond behind the school and turn it into an outdoor classroom. Uh, Principal Rob Hedges and I have been working with designers. We have a good layout. And as, that would be one of the first things done. We'll obviously dig that drainage as we start digging the roads.
Well, procedurally though, in terms of the ordinance, these different site amenities didn't have exact dates or anything attached to them. So are we okay administratively with how to administer that?
Well, go ahead.
There, the amenities are discussed in, um, Article six point two A. It talks about the amenities for the, um, commercial center, and it does discuss timing, uh, within two years of the issuance of an improvement location permit for three of the four buildings located on lots six, seven, eight, and nine. So tho- those are the lots right up along the corner of one sixty-first and Spring Mill. So we do have a, a timing, um, stop for that, I guess you could say.
So all of them would have to be goodified by that date?
Yes, it says the, um, it's the conductor install, amenities depicted on the concept plan, including but not limited to the Park and Plaza on the northeast corner and Loop Trail. And that is in the commercial section. So that's only regarding the commercial amenities, not the residential. Um, except the Loop Trail would, would include the entire development.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
After many meetings with the Spring Mill Station Task Group, this did, and many changes, this did receive a recommendation from that group that it'd be approved.
Thank you, Cindy, thank you, Steve. Any other comments? I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance seventeen dash forty-one.
I have a motion by Mark Keen, is there a second, please?
Second.
A second by Steve Hoover, any further discussion among council members? It's been a work in progress a long time, with many multiple discussions, and just think it's a wonderful addition, and brings certainty to that corner. Very pleased with the outcome, and I look forward to see the buildings coming forward. Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Chuck Lehman.
Yes.
Bob Horkey.
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Senator Jerry?
Yes.
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 Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinance eighteen oh seven, right-of-way signs. This is up for adoption consideration tonight, and it was introduced at our March twelfth meeting. This has to deal with signs that crop up in the right-of-ways, and we're going into an election cycle, and that seems to be part of it, but there are other signs that clog up our roadways. The county has introduced an ordinance, and since our area makes up, the county accounts for about half of our landmass, and it would seem to me that it makes sense for us to adopt an ordinance that is very similar to that which the county has passed, and that would require uniform enforcement by both the county and the city, and we would become aligned with our legislation, and it would match the county's legislation, so you'd see unified, a unified enforcement of those issues. I think if there's further discussion, that's my introduction. This has been something that's been contemplated and talked about for a while, and I've had some conversation with other cities in the county, and they are moving in this direction as well. So, with that, I'd open it up for council discussion.
I've been receiving a number of comments, mostly through social media, through mail. My mic wasn't on, sorry. I've been receiving a number of comments, mostly concerned with, with governmental reach, and also the enforcement part of this, with the structure of the fines. There has been also support for this, and a lot of people would like to see the reduction of sign clutter, so that helps to achieve this. All that being said, I am concerned, I understand that the county's version is in court right now, and ours kind of models that one, so I feel a little bit uncomfortable actually entertaining a vote on this until we have further clarification.
Thank you. Let me speak to something that has to do with this, and there are entities that might be affected. Those major ones would be the Metropolitan Indiana Board of Realtors, MIBOR, as well as real estate companies, and there's an understanding with Baggy and MIBOR. Baggy is the Builders Association of Greater Indianapolis, and they are, and they feel that this, this won't affect the way they do business, and they're not opposed to this kind of legislation. So, I wanted to add that into the record. As to the lawsuit, I don't know, Brian, would you care to? I don't think that's going anywhere, I don't know.
I've not been monitoring it.
Okay. So, I think that it's time for this, this time has come, and I think there's been a lot of positive things. I was in touch with the county commissioners, and there's been positive responses to this, and I think it cleans up our roadways, it's a safety issue, eliminates clutter, clears site distances, so there are a lot of advantages to that. Any other comments? Any other thoughts?
I'll make one. Mr. President, thank you. I've heard some comments, they were all positive, I really haven't heard any negatives, and I think in the overall scheme of things, it just cleans up our roadways, right-of-ways, and just a good thing to do, other cities have it. So, I'm ready to move ahead with it, actually.
I would agree with that as well, especially since the somewhat anticipated stakeholders that might have been objecting to it are now on board with not objecting to it, they recognize the benefit to an improved landscape and safe corners without all of those things obstructing them, so I'm ready to go as well.
It just seems reasonable to have incorporated and unincorporated areas have the same standards, the same rules apply to make, make it consistent throughout the area. And if, for some reason, the county ordinance would be overturned, we'd, we'd get the decision, we'd be able to take a look at it and decide with legal counsel's advice whether we need to make a modification, or it cancels ours at that point in time, but I don't want to not take action on something that provides consistency throughout the county and township.
If it's true that we pass this, then there would also be a problem legally, is that gonna cost us money to try and fight anything? I mean, are we gonna have to fight something potentially? I just don't want to pass something and then have us having to pay money to fix this, so.
I would just monitor what's happening in the county. If we get named as well, then we would jointly defend it. But as far as cost, no, nominal.
Alright, thank you.
I mean, signage is something that we have wrestled with for years. There's a general thinking amongst the public, I believe, that we have too many signs, and even the ones that we feel are required for highway regulation, for directional signage, and certainly this, the real estate signs add a lot to that on the weekends, the corners are just plastered with them. And when we were addressing this several years ago as part of an amendment to our ordinances at the time, we wrestled with that, we met with realtors, we talked to Baggy, we talked to MIBOR, and at that time, the county had not enacted anything, and so we were kind of a leader, and I think we resisted doing that, and being out in the forefront of that and the possible challenges that we might receive. With the county leading the way here, I certainly have no issue with doing this, it, it is our right-of-way, and we should be able to regulate it, and as long as we do that consistently, and we enforce everything consistently, I don't see an issue with it.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else? At this time, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance eighteen oh seven, right-of-way signs.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Chuck Lehman, and a second by Bob Horkey. Is there any further discussion?
I might add, Mr. President, that even in our ordinances, we, as we go through the overlay, we go through all the zoning, commercial, and so forth, we spend more time regulating signage than anything else, to keep it to a minimum, and yet we go out and they're on every corner, so it makes no sense. So, for that reason, I'm in.
Okay, we have a motion before us in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Jamaica?
Yes.
Yes.
Bob Horkey?
Yes.
Senator Jerry?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, council. That concludes old business for this evening, and we'll move on into new business. We have two items to consider. First is the interlocal agreement between, by and between Hamilton County and the Drainage Board and the City of Westfield. Mr. Lawler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, councillors, Mr. Mayor. For the record, I'm Jeremy Lawler, Director of Public Works. Before you tonight, for introduction and consideration, is an interlocal agreement between Hamilton County Drainage Board and the City of Westfield. The essential parts of the agreement are that, are associated with our downtown stream project for Grand Junction. We, Public Works staff, with our consultants, have been working for better than six months to attain a permit to work in the floodway down there. The, coming through the state, through DNR, one of DNR's requirements is that, since Hamilton County is gonna own the drain, but we are going to improve it beyond the normal applications, so we're gonna install some trees and plants and some, the, the stone work that we were doing out there, that we have a maintenance agreement in place between the, the county and the city, saying that the city is going to maintain the drain, even though the Hamilton County is gonna remain the owner of it. So, what it's doing is, it's, Hamilton County is giving us the right to get in their easement, if you will, and maintain the improvements that we're gonna make down there for Grand Junction, so. It's meeting DNR requirement, hopefully it is the very last hurdle in our permit that we've been working hard on, and we can go to construction very soon. So, happy to answer any questions you might have with that.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Lawler?
I'm just gonna be noisy tonight. Is the project where, where we have this agreement specified, I mean, for just the Grand Junction, because it's not the full length of the Anna Kendall in Westfield, right?
Correct, so yes, it's, it's specific to the improvements we've made with Mill Street, as well as the extension of the new improvements that go down to the Union Street Bridge, and then a little bit of the, there's a drain that comes in through Ace of Bales, under thirty-two, and ties in, makes kind of a Y shape, so from Jersey Street to the Grass and Branch Creek corridor is ours as well. So, everything inside the footprint of Grand Junction.
Okay.
And then the regional detention piece we did to the north, or to the south, sorry, of Mill Street, with the Mill Street project.
Okay.
Anyone else? Well, I think it's exciting that this is sort of the last hurdle in our way to proceed. That's my comment. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Yeah, a motion by Joe Edwards, is there a second, please?
Second.
Alright, I can't tell. I think Bob, you beat out Steve.
Voice was closer, didn't have as far to travel.
I think so, I think so. Alright, we have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, could the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Jamaica?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Lawler. You starting tomorrow?
I, I hope so.
Alright, thank you, thank you, thank you. No, no, that's a good thing. Alright, and the last order of business under, under new business is Resolution eighteen one oh four, establishing the Riverfront License Review Committee. This is up for adoption this evening.
Good evening, members of the council. As you'll recall, you adopted ordinance eighteen oh six at your last meeting, establishing the municipal riverfront development project area for downtown Westfield, the Grand Junction. In that ordinance, it contemplates the formation of a committee that would review applications for alcohol permits, and this resolution would do that.
Alright, thank you. I just care to comment on some of this. Cindy actually suggested a, some, a different configuration of the review committee, and I talked to her a little bit this afternoon about that, just before the meeting, and it appears to me that by title, the participants in the review committee, I'd like the council to consider would be the makeup, and certainly I think the economic director should be involved in that, it's sort of a first call. And then I do believe, and Cindy's suggestion was, we might have two members, two people appointed by this body, one to be a counselor and one to be a citizen from the community, if I understand. And so, with that in mind, I'd like to have some discussion among members, whether that would be something appropriate in the structure of the committee of three.
It looks to me like in paragraph one, Riverfront License Review Committee is who I established, consists of three members, economic, and community development director, one appointed by the mayor, would be the citizen, one appointed by the council. So, I think if, if it's understood that the one appointed by the council is appointed by the president of the council, that would give you three different people, already written in there that way.
Alright. Any other comments?
That's not, obviously, what's written specifically here today, but adding one word that council would appoint one of the members accomplishes that. Is there a reason to, to have council choosing a citizen as opposed to the mayor? Does the mayor not want to do that? The mayor trusts us with everything to be able to decide this?
This actually came, came from me, and it, this was my baby that I brought up. I had been getting some comments from folks in the downtown, and they were kind of just, just a little bit, I don't know, scared about the future of this, and, and not feeling like they had any control maybe, and I was thinking personally that it would make sense to have either two counselors, you know, with Matt, two counselors and, that have downtown jurisdiction, or one of the at-large in that, so then we can have the representation in that regard. No disrespect to you, Mayor, but, you know, it's a district thing, so.
It looks like to me it's pretty well clearly written, I mean, economic development director, one appointed by the mayor and one appointed by the council, I don't...
I think most of them are done.
Yeah, I mean, Merrick would appoint himself if he wanted to, but I don't know where he'd want to or not.
I don't think I'd will.
But I mean, it's fairly clearly, clearly written to me, and, and I, I think it spreads the, thi- this thing could be a burden to, to anybody who's on there about deciding who gets an alcoholic beverage permit, which are looked upon differently by different people, of course, and I think the, the grief is kind of spread around, and I think that's the way it needs to be. That's just my opinion, I don't know whether I'm right or not, but...
I agree with it.
So...
Just in, informationally, the reason it's structured this way, and the only reason, is because the only other body that we have that does, performs this function is also structured this way. Doesn't mean this one has to be, but the economic development permits that are administered throughout, through the city as well, the, the body is set up exactly the same way as, as this resolution sets forth.
Okay, so we have the resolution before us, is there, we need a motion to proceed, so at this time, I would ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution eighteen dash one oh four.
As written.
As written.
Okay, thank you. Is there?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Dr. Keen, and a second by Mr. Horkey. Any further discussion among council?
The change is not something I was willing to, to die on that hill or anything for, it was just something that I thought might be helpful, but it's fine.
Understood, and I think that was valid. I think that was a good, good, good discussion. Thank you. All right, we have a motion before us. I have any further discussion? All right, Cindy, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Senator Poljerr?
Yes.
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 Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That concludes our legislative business. At this time, residents who wish to address the council and items not on the agenda may do so at this time. So is anybody who wish to come forward? All right, then we'll move on to council comments. Thank you.
I, I can give, give an update on Advisory Plan Commission meeting from last Monday evening. We had four items on a consent agenda that were approved, was approved. Two of those were the Westfield Middle School addition and the Westfield Intermediate School addition. Also, a parking addition at, on one hundred and fifty-sixth Street, and a detailed development plan for a Texas Roadhouse, which I'm rather excited about. I love Texas Roadhouse. The only other item on our agenda was Spring Mill Villas, formerly Maple Knoll, a overall development plan and a secondary plot. That was also approved, and that was it. Relatively short meeting.
All right, well, thank you, Steve. Any other council comments?
Open God is coming.
Yes, sir. It is, it is.
Watch, watch your television sets with intensity. Or your computers. Yeah, watch your computers and your mailbox with intensity.
All right, thank you, council. Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Jim. Last week, pretty eventful for our Public Works guys once again. Had to switch all the trucks out from potholes to salt. Did a heck of a job over the weekend. Was it Saturday we got, we got all that? Yeah. The next day, I couldn't even tell you did anything, so I'm not sure. But you handled all that well. It was, it was great. Hopefully, we're done. You, our public safety guys, did a wonderful job over the winter. We didn't have any huge problems. We didn't have any terrible accidents, and that's a testimony to all three of your departments, guys. Thank you very much. We have combined what we used to call Earth Day and Arbor Day into a new event called Green Day, which will hold Saturday, April twenty-one, at Freedom Trails Park. We'll have a seedling giveaway, as we've had for some times. We'll have a workshop that'll be about our native tall grass prairies that'll be held, and you can get information on Westfield Welcome. The, the prairie, if you want to see a great big long one beginning to take shape, it's all along both sides of US thirty-one, which, if you look, it received its one and only mowing of the year. We can't burn like a normal prairie. It'd be pretty neat, but NDA won't let us do that, so. If you look, it got its haircut, and it's a pretty neat green thing to do. Speaking of green, you know, planting the city blue. A promotion we'll be doing in honor of our first, first annual Colts Training Camp, where we encourage all of our neighborhoods, apartments, homes to do your best with blue. This year, we'll be doing as much as we can with, with that throughout the city, the roundabouts, the banners. Again, Westfield Welcome has the, has the information. Construction, you notice, Asa Bales North Playground's begun. That was designed in collaboration with the city and the Westfield Middle School, and it's kind of geared towards that age group. So that'll be kind of exciting to see. And Jeremy, down at the south end, what's the cement pad that's pouring up there? Tony asked me, and I couldn't answer. Fitness. I'm staying out of there.
Why you didn't know anybody?
It would actually be construction about the same time as the playground.
Okay.
It will open if everything goes well. The playground will open one day, and the business will.
Good, thank you. And just two other things. Last week, we had our Wednesday morning, our annual Boy Scout breakfast. Raised a little over, they revised the figure upward, raised a little over forty-three thousand dollars. So every year, we, we creep up, and my goal is to get, to keep a little above our population, a dollar, a dollar a person. So I, I think per capita, we do a, a real good job with that. And also, on Thursday morning, we had another breakfast, our annual Youth Assistance Honor Breakfast for not necessarily youth assistant kids, but we had fifteen from first grade through twelfth grade, nominated by their teachers, principals, counselors. Kids that have faced some type of adversity in life and have successfully overcome it, and to hear their stories. If you haven't been, urge you to come next year. We do provide Kleenexes on every table, and they were used quite liberally, I can tell you. So another great breakfast.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor. At this time, that concludes our business. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, Cindy Poljerr made a motion. Bob Horkey second. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.